Good morning, and everyone else for this meeting. I'm Mike Gullich. I've called over the October 22nd, 2019 work session agenda. Reminder, everyone to turn off mobile devices, please. Brian, will you bring up signing sheet? I want to welcome back Eugene Morehouse from Westside Christian Church. Come up in your location, please, wearing those hands. You usually do not find me in a pink tie, but this is Cancer Awareness Month. In 93, my wife died of breast cancer and was not saved. My granddaughter died in 96 from leukemia. And I just went through my wife having heart surgery and that, and she's going back to the doctor today, so I won't be able to stay for the meeting. And I just want people to be aware of these things, to let's go to our Lord and pray. Heavenly Father, sometimes things come our way that we just don't understand. Sometimes we look for our leaders to lead us and guide us. May you give them direction, give them the heart for the people and the people around them that they love and encourage one another, lift one another up before your throne, Lord. And we ask that you be with our first responders. They have such a hard job and so many people are making it rougher on them. But may we always realize they're there to help us, to lift us up and encourage us and protect us. And dear heavenly Father, the doctors and the nurses have been so great here in this county. And we ask, Lord, that you be with this election that's coming and those who vote, that they may prayerfully think about who they're voting for and why they're voting. And dear Lord, each and every one of us as individuals, may we be uplifting and encouraging to one another. As I said before, Lord, there's a lot of things I don't understand, but I know you're in control. Help us to understand you and to love you and to love your Son that gave His life for us, that we may have an eternity in the place He's preparing for us. In the name of your Son and our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, all God's people say.
Amen.
Ready and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One of the minutes, October 8th, 2019 work session minutes. October 8th, board meeting minutes. And October 11th, 2019, special call meeting minutes are ready for the board meeting. Our announcements, this week's positively called, about to turn over to a save.
So this is Breast Awareness Month, October. As most of you know, that I have gone through breast cancer the last year and a half, two years. I had all my treatments. My final surgery is tomorrow, I'll be done. But I just want you to know that it is very important to go get your mammogram. If you don't want a mammogram, go get the thermogram. Just do something, check yourselves. If you think something's wrong, it might be, the doctors might not see it, the mammogram might not see it, but pressure your doctors to test further. Something might be there, like it was for me. They didn't find mine till a year later, and I'd gone to the doctor a year before, had a mammogram and an ultrasound, and they didn't find it because it had woven itself through my tissue. It's a rare, very rare way that it grows. So please, if you feel something and you know something's there, get checked, because most likely it is.
I'm Ashley Gullett with the Paulding County Human Resources Department. As part of our wellness initiatives in October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we had Quantum Radiology and our Mobile Memography Unit come out yesterday onsite to do mobile mammograms. Our goal for the day was 20, and we reached 29 women here on campus. I have Leslie here with Quantum Radiology to kind of go over the importance of early detection.
Thank you, Ashley. And yes, we are Quantum Radiology, and we offer mobile mammography throughout metro Atlanta and parts of Florida. Here, we came yesterday to screen women, and we did, like Ashley said, we were able to screen about 29 women. It is very important for early detection, because one in eight women are diagnosed with breast cancer annually. Thank you, Ashley, for inviting us to come out to Paulding County to be able to screen your staff.
Thank you for coming out. We also have another special treatee. We have Krista from Q99.7. I'm sure many of you probably listen to her on the radio. They're also tying in with Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and we would like to have her speak a little bit as well.
Thank you so much. So again, when the Burt Show heard that Quantum Radiology had reached out and CW69 had reached out, our core demographic is women, and we know how important Breast Cancer Awareness Month is and early detection is. We want to make sure that you take care of yourself, that you get those mammograms, that way you get early detection. We just, it makes so much sense for the Burt Show, Q99.7, Quantum Radiology, to come out to Paulding County and support you guys and your health initiative.
Thank you so much. So we appreciate everyone's support. We hope that you continue to follow us this month as we send out more information on breast cancer awareness. And again, thank you so much for your time.
Another invited guest we had known in the bid awards. Number one, approved purchase of stream mitigation credits for the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Supply Program from Applewood Mitigation Bank, $2,928.29, $90 per credit, for a total of
Okay, can you find one, Henry, and number two? Because one of us has talked about that, doesn't it?
Number two, approved purchase of stream mitigation credits for the Richland Creek Reservoir Water Supply Program from Alisi... Alacalcy Mitigation Bank, I'm sorry. $8,422.34, $18 per credit, for a total of $151,602.12.
Today, we have quite a few bid awards, so I've asked for quite a bit of assistance. I don't want to spend that much money by myself. So we did receive bids last week for these mitigation credits, and they are a bit challenging to explain, so Lori is going to address some of those.
A few months ago, we purchased some credits, and I explained that we would be having to issue another RFP for the remaining credits, and this is the, that second RFP, and it will be the last one for the reservoir. We have, we issued the RFP for both the primary and secondary service areas. The primary area is closer in to the project. It is the preferred set of banks under our 404 permit for purchasing credits. Because in the last round of going out and reaching out to the banking community, we had included both, and we had exhausted the primary at that point, but we were extending the dates. So we acquired the primary and secondary at the encouragement of the Corps, and we received a, one bid from the primary service area and then bids from, proposals from the secondary service area as well. Applewood, this is the remaining credits available through the Applewood Mitigation Bank. They actually had a pending purchase that was released, making a few more credits available in our service area. And then the Alacalcy, the remaining credits are available in the Alacalcy Bank, which is up in far north Georgia. The, there are differences in both when these banks were created and as well as their location and property values that the, that lead to differences in, significant differences in per credit price. But we are, we are recommending that we purchase those remaining credits within the primary service area and then reach out to the second, have the secondary service area be the remaining credits, and that fulfills our 404 requirements.
What was the average, though? Was it like 20, 38?
It was 32, 32 and change is what the average cost of what we paid for credits. The bulk of the credits that we purchased were purchased at a cost of $29 per credit. And we had anticipated being able to buy all of our credits from that bank, but our contract did have a provision in there that they had a commitment and that the other purchaser did have to, again, purchasing their credits, which meant that they did not have the remaining credits for us.
How did that line up with the industry standard?
Credit purchases are going, are going up. I will tell you that that average cost is less than our second low per credit price back in 2016.
Thank you, Graham. I'm truly lucky watching this, thinking, what? You know, anything written, as much as, you know, my background still already explains someone what you're really talking about, so thank you. Another bid awards next. The approved purchase of office furniture for the Adult Detention Law Enforcement Center, consisting of seating, tables, miscellaneous shelving, whiteboards, and children's furniture to office creations in the amount of $481,814.54.
And we'll say number four as well, if that's okay.
Yes. And number four, approved purchase of office furniture for the Adult Detention Law Enforcement Center, consisting of desks, cubicles, and storage for offices to Advantage Office Supply in the amount of $326,297.
Okay, each one of these vendors are state contract. They hold state contract for office furniture. And Amy, just in check with CPS, as well as Sheriff's Office, has worked for quite a few months, I believe, to go to 22 of them and get the best cost that they could for the county. And so because these were state contracts, we didn't actually go out to bid, they just worked with those two to get the best possible costs. So I'm going to ask Amy to come up and kind of give you how she, the analysis and how they arrived at each one of these vendors.
Good morning. So this process has, has taken us quite a while to get where we are, but we feel that where we ended up is, it's giving you the biggest benefit for your buck. We've been working with furniture vendors since last December. Actually, we reached out to a company here in Georgia called Georgia Correctional, and they're usually pretty competitive with their numbers, so we really thought that they were going to give us great numbers. We got back their pricing, and it was well over budget, what we had. It was significantly over budget at approximately 1.6 million. So back to the drawing board, we had to go. We went, reached out to a few other vendors to start working with, to get into budget. We've been working with them, gosh, since the beginning of the year, honestly, to go through several revisions, several different options for the furniture. We finally decided to split the package up, because, you know, one vendor was not as competitive in some items and another was. So instead of awarding the whole package to one vendor, which would have actually cost you more, we decided to split those packages up. So the Sheriff's Office had been over to both vendors to see some of the representative furniture and see what they would actually be getting. So obviously, Advantage supplies a lot of furniture here in the county, so we've actually taken a couple of field trips to some local companies to see that furniture. And then also office creations, they're based in Norcross. So we went over there to see what products they had. So Sheriff's Office has been able to really sit down, touch, feel this furniture, which is extremely important, especially when you're talking about, you know, seating is very important. You know, there's a lot of differences from a $99 chair to a $300 chair. So, you know, these are things that we want to make sure are going to last for years and years and have great warranties. So kind of where, short story, where we are now is breaking that package up between office creations and Advantage. And shelving is actually, I'm taking on shelving myself. I'll be ordering, going out, getting pricing on metal shelving. The Sheriff's Office, I've coordinated with Colonel Hunton, and we feel that some of the inmate labor can assemble that shelving, so that will also save, save some money on that side.
We have, we have one more comment about that, is one of the questions that came up is what's, what furniture are we, existing furniture are we using? Is this all new? And instead, what are we going to be dealing with that? So the Sheriff's Department is prepared to kind of address that question.
Good morning. The, I want folks thinking, the Sheriff's cut the reins loose, and I've gone hollering wild on furniture, because it's the last thing I want, to spend money on furniture. But working with Ms. Amy with CPS, we've worked diligently to get the pricing down as low as we can and being very conservative, buying just the furniture that we need right now, not for the future positions and things of that nature. Our current furniture is approximately 20 years old. A lot of it's been pieced together through donations, through Lockheed. It's, I mean, it looks pretty rough, it's pretty bad. And the stuff that is good, if things go through and fire takes over where the Sheriff's Office is currently located at, there's still some good furniture that they could be able to use there. We also plan on using some of the good furniture for the DTF building that we're building currently. So they'll be able to utilize that furniture as well. And then some of it I want to take with us to the new facility, so that when we do get positions filled, we'll have something that we can work out of right then, and we don't have to necessarily have to order stuff right away, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
One more comment, the first two items for the mitigation credits, they are funded through the reservoir bonds that was built into the budget, and these two items are coming from the furniture, FFNA, so furniture fixtures and equipment for the jail. Do you have, those two, that number as well?
Any more questions? Come in. Next under bid awards, award the audiovisual services for the Adult Detention and Law Enforcement Center to the lowest responsive bidder, Solution Z, in the amount of $91,635.13.
This is a typical bid for the new facility for audiovisual services. We received three participants, and the bids range from $91,635.13 up to $139,966.14. CPS reviewed the bid, and they are, they have determined themselves, as well as their engineers, that Solutions has priced a competitive rate to match those services. And it's also a bet, though.
Any questions? Next under bid, approved replacement of the security system at the Watson Complex to the responsive bidder, 83 Communications, in the amount of $1,012,014.14.
We moved into this facility in 2008, so the current security system is about 11 years old and has experienced quality failures, and those failures have seen increase over time. And Will's going to come up and talk about that. He has worked with a selection, a pretty much a security committee to determine what we should do for the replacement of this, this equipment, and they have requested that we replace the security equipment. And he's also going to talk about what that is, so it's not just door locks, it's your video, it's an all-inclusive, and they would like to see us replace the entire security system in the amount of $1,012,014.14.
Good morning. I appreciate you giving me a minute to talk on this. We've had some equipment in place for a long time. It's past its life expectancy, and this is a system that we need to depend on daily for staff and citizens who come to the complex. And we put a group together consisting of the Sheriff's Office, Marshal's Office, Court Administration, building maintenance, and information technology. All these different departments have ownership within this solution. The access control system, while I can't say too much about it due to the sensitivity and nature of it, I do want to inform you and the public that, so there's hundreds, if not thousands, of different components, triggers, and alerts that allows public safety to respond to an incident quickly and effectively. So years ago, Brian Nicholas made this a popular issue, and we have to respond to it in a responsive manner. We can't be putting this on the back shelf. We have to respond proactively instead of, versus being reactive. So again, this is something that I don't recommend the replacement of, but the committee that we put together recommends a replacement of. We did have one bidder, although we had seven vendors come out and review the facility and attempt to bid on it. They just did not spend a bid on it. Want to answer any questions that you might have?
That's due to the size of the job.
Yes, sir. It's a complex environment with a lot of components involved. Had it been simpler in nature, we would have had more responses, that's right.
Can you estimate the life expectancy of the new system?
On the new system, it'll be more digital components instead of analog components, you know, that were put in, you know, nearly a decade or more ago, will properly receive about the same expectancy, you know, from seven to 10 years on end as well.
Next under bid awards is award additional purchase of network switches for the Watson Complex to PC Solutions Integration, Inc., in the amount of $363,747.16.
This one is also related to the reservoir as well as the jail, so it's network switches for both projects, about $57,000, but this is reservoir related as we get closer to turning online, ready for the switch to make it work. So this will hopefully do that, and then the jail is about $360,000 of this project for network switches for the detention center. And so Will's going to address those as well.
Again, as Ms. Gullett said, this will network switches both the detention center coming up right behind the Watson Complex and the reservoir. These switches will fit well within the environment that we've created for this building back in fall of last year. It's a necessary component for the communications structure where the offices communicate internally and externally. I'm pretty excited about the stage where we're at. It means that we are pretty much at starting to supply, you know, for the building for staff occupancy. So it's coming right along, and once you get to this stage, you know, you're going to put the final touches on things. So it's very exciting for, I want to be, but probably the community as well.
Any questions, comments? That does it for the bid awards. That'll be reports from committees and departments. Kelly Comstock with Brown and Caldwell, referencing Richland Creek.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to allow me to come and give you a quarterly update for progress at the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. We've got some very exciting, different milestones that have been reached, and so I wanted to share some of those with you as well as general progress. First, I'd like to start at the Etowah River intake. We've actually placed the final concrete associated with the overall program. This is where we will be pulling water out of the Etowah River. We've got screens that are submerged within the river bottom that allow flow to go through large pipes into that structure that you see that's under construction, and that's the pump station. There's a wet well that extends down about 40 feet below grade where the water flows into that, and then the pumps pump it up about three and a half miles to the reservoir. So this slab associated with this building was the final concrete that needed to be placed for the overall program, so they've done that. They've installed pumps, and they're busy starting to do the superstructure associated with the pump station building. The little image you can see on the left, on the right, is the shaft from one of those pumps. You can see them in the bottom picture on the bottom right. And those are large 500 horsepower motors that sit above ground, pump the water up from that shaft that extends down 40 feet for each one of those pumps. There's a remote electrical building that houses all of the motor starters and drives associated with these pumps, as well as all the controls. And a large amount of ductwork and electrical wiring has to connect those two buildings, so the contractor's been placing that duct bank that you can see on the bottom left project, so that allows all the communication and power to take place. So right now, they're erecting the structural steel. The architectural precast will come shortly after that, the roof will go on, and then they'll really be just starting everything up. So we're, we're excited and hopeful that they'll be ready to start up by the end of the year. We're coordinating with Georgia Power to provide power to the, to the facility. They still have to run their feeder, they're working through an easement with the airport, they're going through the airport, and they're very close to doing that work. So we need them to have their power energized by mid-November, so that we can start the pumps up in December, and hopefully that stays on track. We're, we're sort of tracking that very closely. At the water treatment plant, all of the facilities are, are very, very close to completion. It's basically finishing touches, starting up all the mechanical equipment. We've done all the hydraulic testing of the structures and systems and doing final electrical and control system installation and checkout. We've also installed all the signage that's required around the site, and the plant will essentially be ready by early December. We can't start operating the plant until we obviously have water in the reservoir, so the critical path is to start to fill the reservoir, and then as the water comes up, we'll initiate the plant to start water production. To get water out of the reservoir, the reservoir intake and pump station basically will, will do that. There are large pumps in this structure. When the water gets to a deep enough level, we'll be able to start bringing this, this online as well. Important to note that we have started clearing the final reservoir pool, and so that's been ongoing and progressing very well. At the reservoir intake and pump station, we're doing a final checkout on the pumps. We've done all the We've done all the final grassing and fencing and security system, as well as building signage there, so that, that facility is very close to, to undergoing commission once we get water. And then another major milestone is that we, we topped out the top of the dam. Two point six million cubic yards of soil have been placed, and now they're doing the final access road across the top. Safe dams has come out and done their initial inspection, and by doing that, they've allowed us to close the outlet gate, and we've established temporary pumping until, uh, the final inspection is complete, then we'll be able to start the, the filling process. Um, the primary outlet structure, that is, is now complete, and we're preparing to set the bridges that will go out upon that. Uh, they will be actually set next week. So everything's on track for, for the dam, uh, the primary outlet structure to be available in December to when we're able to start pumping water, and we'll be able to do that. And as I mentioned, we're currently clearing the reservoir pool, so we've got a total of two hundred and eight acres of clearing that has to take place, and we've cleared a hundred and fifteen acres so far, so we're on, on track to being complete December first, which is the timeline that was anticipated associated with that. Finished water pipeline project, we have that in two different phases. Phase one is, is now complete, and phase two, we've completed eight of nine bores that, that had to take place, and we're installing piping at the booster pump station, which is located by the DDS facility out here behind the Watson Complex. We're about ninety percent complete with the piping as well, so we're getting very, very close to completion of this project. Um, we anticipate this to be, to be graded by the end of the year as well. So overall, we, we, we are complete with the rawer pipeline. That's ready to go. Once we get the intake going in December, we'll be able to start filling the reservoir, the water treatment plant, the river pump station, they're all ready to go, so everything's aligning to be done by the end of the year. We're hoping to have a public event once we start bringing water into the reservoir. Uh, we'll, we'll sort of have a public gathering to commemorate that because that'll be, that'll be a major undertaking, and then, then we'll go through the process of starting to fill the reservoir. Um, we anticipate the first thirty feet filling very, very quickly, um, probably within two to three weeks, depending on flows in the Etowah River. And then the second thirty feet, we're limited to doing, um, two feet per week, and then the final thirty feet will be about one foot per week. So it'll be, it'll be a while before the reservoir's completely full, but, um, between that second and third period, uh, or, I'm sorry, between the, in the second period, we'll be able to start the plant up. So we'll just be looking at water quality, um, so we're anticipating being able to start the, the treatment through the plant and distributing to Polton County customers shortly after the first year. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions if you may have at this time. Great. Thanks for the opportunity for the update.
Thank you. Coming up today, it's been reports from committees and departments. I know it's been hard, and with the rain and we've had this past weekend and yesterday, Gloria Hasmore should have talked about the drought out there.
Sometimes it seems as though all we have to do is have the chairman schedule a tour of the reservoir or, or schedule a drought update, and we get some rain. Uh, the, um... Okay, there, there it's gone right now. You know, at the beginning of the year, we were talking about flooding, uh, but in the, um, over the last six weeks, we have had extreme, record-breaking heat and a lack of rainfall in the, uh, in the state of Georgia that has led to a worsening drought condition. Um, and this just shows the evolution of what the climatologists are calling a flash drought. Uh, came up unexpectedly as, with weather systems from the hurricane that, that came in along the coast, um, and, and we have, um, we've seen the, this pattern worsening over, over that last six weeks. The drought monitor from last week has Polton County being in, um, in a moderate to severe drought, um, but a lot of the metro area and North Georgia in extreme drought conditions. Uh, and, and so it'll be interesting to see after some of the, uh, some of the rainfall. We had some rainfall, uh, but not enough to catch up the, uh, the deficit that we've been experiencing. A Level One drought response was declared by the state on Friday afternoon, um, after consultation with climatologists and with water systems. Um, and it, this Level One just requires us to implement public information in the community, making people aware that there, there are, um, that, that there are some weather-related issues. Some of the systems have actually gotten special permission to move to a Level Two drought because of the condition of their water supplies. Again, pointing to the need for us to have our own water supply. Uh, we do have an ongoing water conservation program as part of the, uh, our requirements under the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, and are, are active in that. Yesterday, we pushed out additional messaging about the drought, and that was done in coordination with the City of Dallas and the City of Hyra. Uh, we work very closely when we're in these drought conditions to make sure that our messaging is consistent because really all people know, a lot of people don't know where their water's coming from, what, who their supplier is, so we want to make sure that we send out a consistent message across the entire county. Generally, people can water their landscape between four P M. and ten A M. Those are, that, that's the time of the day when watering is most effective. It eliminates the, the hotter part of the day from watering, and that is a year-round. But at this point, we're asking people to water only when needed. Um, you know, as we're approaching winter months, plants don't need as much water, and we really only need to water those plants when they're starting to show signs of distress. We're just asking folks, asking our customers to just be good stewards of our water resources. So just some other things, uh, just reminders for, for folks about, um, being good stewards of, of our water is regularly check and repair leaks that they find on their, on their plumbing, taking shorter showers and turning off water when you're shaving or brushing your teeth, and running dishwashers and, and washing machines only when you have home loads, and we appreciate everyone's support.
Public participation on agenda items we have none. Same agenda, discussion on four items. One, authorize the chairman to approve the donation, three thousand four hundred and thirty-three point three seven square feet, which is point oh seven nine to Brightaway to GDOT. SPI number zero zero one three nine five zero, which is a possible. And two is authorize the chairman to sign a lighting and service agreement between Polton County and Hennar Road Real Estate LLC to build for ten streetlights along Corporate Drive North and Commerce Parkway that will have a monthly cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars plus a ten percent administrative fee of thirteen dollars and fifty cents a month. Number three, adopt new classification for utility inspector. Number four, adopt resolution nineteen dash thirty-two, replying Ben Amerson to the Polton County Board of Assessors, with a term date beginning January one, two thousand twenty, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Get out of the same agenda, move this new business, any of these items. As our old business, we have none. Of the new business, discuss action to authorize the chairman to approve two development agreements, one with Costco Wholesale Corporation and the other with twelve sixty Airport Drive LLC. The county's participation in public transportation and sewer improvements in the form of substantially similar form as set forth in attachments A and B. On this, I'd like to turn it to Mr. Baker to talk to Mr. Jones to talk about.
Uh, thank you. Before George gives you the, uh, all the information, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, you hear us talk about Team Polting. We talk about it a lot. We really believe it. This is definitely a Team Polting agenda item. There's been a lot of work over the last year and a half to get us where we are today. This is one of the final steps that has really been needed to get this project done and closure to occur in the next, hopefully, next month or so. But there's been a lot of folks that have worked long to get, get us here, uh, so I just wanted to mention a couple of them, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. Uh, of course, George from DOT is going to speak in a minute, Scott Green, our operations director, and a big shout-out to Chris Robinson from, uh, planning, uh, the planning of, uh, Community Development Department with all the planning and all the issues that have been involved in this. But the biggest shout-out and the biggest cheerleader and the hardest-working person on this whole project, it's, it's unfortunate that he's not here today, and I'm kind of glad that he's not, because I want to brag on him a little bit, and he probably wouldn't want me to brag on him if he was here. Hopefully, he's watching live stream, but it's been our chairman. He has worked day and night. I see Scott shaking his head, yes. Um, he has worked a tremendous number of hours on this project, um, and getting everybody together and working with all the different departments that have been involved with it, and, um, also, Gloria, I see you there, I didn't want to leave you out either, and I appreciate your department and, uh, working on it, but the chairman really has, as they say in the Navy, a young man's job on this project, so I appreciate the opportunity to mention that. I hope in return you won't be mad at me bragging on him, but he definitely deserves the bragging today, so I'll turn it over to George.
Good morning. All right, let me discuss a little bit about the commitments that Polton County is making towards the successful, um, completion of this project. Right now, there's offset public sewer outfall for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We're going to, um, basically design, bid out, construct, and maintain the east-west roadway that will connect the Old Griffin Road, goes on the north side of Dallas Dodge and Berber Collision Class to the Costco site. That is to be up to two hundred thousand dollars, I believe it'll be less than that. And also, um, construct and maintain the traffic signal that connects the main Costco access site on Highway one twenty, and that's roughly about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Total commitment right now, we're looking at is about five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, let me get into the specifics of some of this. The traffic signal, um, was recommended based on a traffic engineering study prepared by Costco and approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation, which is the maintaining entity on Highway one twenty. You know, we, I'm sorry, they're, you know, they're the, they basically improve all the traffic signals. We actually, in coordination with GDOT, maintain the traffic signals on Highway one twenty with their permission, all the way from the Cobb Line down to State Route Six. Um, so it makes sense for us to actually be there and bid out and inspect, ensure the traffic signals, since we're going to be taking it over anyways, just basically make sure that we get what we're looking for. We have, you know, experience in constructing and maintaining traffic signals, and we could typically have this work done cheaper than, um, developers and companies being that we are not making a profit on it, and also, we're basically removing layers of subcontractors that are basically taken their cut out of it. So again, I think this is a good win for us. Um, the signal itself consists of, you know, all the traffic signal-related items, such as traffic, normal signal heads, pedestrian equipment, anything to serve the traffic signal, so without any roadway improvements on that part of the project. Um, the third lane on the east-west roadway, so it goes between Old Griffin Road and Costco, just north of Dallas Dodge and Berber Collision. It's about five hundred and fifteen feet long. Um, basically, that third lane will allow us to have a left and right turn lane at the Old Griffin intersection, and also a left and a right turn lane at the Costco intersection. So, um, basically, it helps serve the development, helping with the traffic flow throughout that area once it gets built out, and just, you know, provide additional capacity. We've developed conceptual plans for this. We'll go along, finalize, put in our engine plans, bid this out, get it constructed, and then maintain the roadway, convert it to a public roadway. Um, all this is done, I believe we have a May first construction timetable. Um, I believe we're supposed to have Boa ahead sometime around December first, so if that, that date is met, I believe we'll have no problem in meeting these timetables. And like Frank had said, you know, um, this is a good step, basically towards, you know, improving the, you know, the eighty and twelve ratio that Dave was always speaking about. People talk about commercial. This is a good step to actually bring in some tax dollars and kind of reverse that trend. So, um, looking at it from our perspective, I think it's worthwhile, that's what we're taking these transportation dollars and putting it towards the structure, so that benefits this project, but also the value to additional folks and businesses in this area. If I can answer any questions.
I've got some comments.
I wish I had a nickel for every time I've had somebody ask me, when's Costco coming? Is Costco coming? Is Costco still coming? Do you know, do you know any updates about Costco? Back in, earlier this year, at the state and county address, one of the things that I talked about was developments coming up in one twenty, and of course Costco is a big one that everyone's been talking about for a while, so we're certainly excited about that. George alluded to the fact that they're going to be collecting tax dollars for us. Also, we're showing out that Costco has very loyal customers who expect that a big chunk of those tax dollars will come from neighboring counties, so we're excited about that. And, um, and that's great, but also wanted to highlight, this isn't just any other big-box retail. Costco's a good corporation. Uh, we're talking about neighborhood of two hundred jobs coming into the county on this. Uh, those are good welcoming jobs and, uh, opportunities for full benefits for health, dental, vision, retirement, and one of the benefits I thought was neat, um, Scott gave you an info sheet that has here, Thanksgiving, you get, employees get free turkeys. But that's fun, and, um, it's kind of a neat thing, but it also shows that it's a company that's willing to think outside the box to, to be creative in the benefits that they offer their customers, their employees. As a result of that kind of stuff, they have a very loyal employee base, and so, um, they also have a very loyal customer base, and so we're excited about that. I know that I'm, I'm excited to be able to give the affirmative yes, and, and when I'm asked those questions, I think, I really can't tell you how many people have asked me. It seems like eighty percent of the messages I get from Rebecca is, is a citizen looking for an update on the Costco situation, and so I'm excited that it's going to be a good development right there on one twenty, so we're excited. Thank you all for everything you guys have done for it. And Dave, as Frank said, put in countless numbers of hours working on this, and it's going to be great for the county.
You know, I just, George, Scott, and everybody, you know, when it was coming about, you know, I'd have to call Chris, or I'd call Laurie, or I'd call George or Scott or somebody, and I'd try to get an update on Costco, you know, and it seemed like it was different than what I talked with, but it seemed like it was all came together toward the end. I mean, Dave, yes, he would send messages at six o'clock on Sunday morning, I'd have an update on Costco, so, you know, it was always mine, you know, it might be a Friday or a Sunday or a Monday, he would give some updates, but, you know, in the few meetings that I was able to sit in, Joe, Richard, Scott worked very hard with the owners of the property, along with Costco, making this happen, so really want to give a shout-out, you know.
I think it's exciting, too, when these big boxes come in. There's a number of franchises that piggyback along, you know, with their studies, and those, uh, I'm excited to see what she rounds us. Always.
For any of those looking for a job, they pay pretty well from my understanding.
Next, on new business, discuss actions to approve and revision of the alcohol beverage license fee schedule for the effective day of November, November one, two thousand and eighteen.
Good morning. By approving and revision of the county's alcohol beverage license fee schedule, effective date of November first, is going to allow us to actually help some of these businesses that are coming into the county.
that are coming into the county and our current businesses. Right now, we feel that the current fees, they're a little high compared to our, the population of this county. We feel like bringing in new fees will bring us more in line with the surrounding counties with a similar population to Paulding County. This will also take us a bit closer to fees that are charged in Dallas and Hyrum. We've also found that our current businesses and our new businesses have actually struggled to meet these fees. We feel that by lowering these fees, more businesses will be prone to come into our county versus going somewhere else. What we'd like to put forward to the board is lowering our combination distilled spirits, which consists of distilled spirits, either one malt beverage and wine, from its current rate of $6,600 down to $4,950 and our full pour, which consists of distilled spirits, wine and malt beverage, from its current rate of $8,150 down to $62,000. Like I said, we feel that this is going to help our businesses out as far as getting hit with these fees every year and it makes it more consistent with the counties that have our populations, such as Paulding County.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Looking to, look at, is this the dollars? Next, under new business, discuss action to approve a bill pay services contract with
We have an opportunity at this point to partner with Greystone Power. Greystone Power has been utilizing U.S. Payments as a kiosk service bill pay provider and they have a network of kiosks around not only this county but surrounding counties, providing an opportunity for people to make their payments. The kiosks accept credit cards, checks and cash and Greystone approached us particularly as they were looking at moving from their 278 location to possibly locate a kiosk and partner with us at our water customer service center to provide a location for a 24-hour kiosk. As our discussions continued, we also identified that one of the things that we have are people who come in, who pay their taxes or conduct other business here at the administration building. We saw some people who would like to be able to pay their bill while they are here. So, we had an opportunity to locate a kiosk here in the administration building. The monthly fees in the agreement are for a, for an exterior and as well as an interior unit. What we're looking at is an interior installation that is similar to the one that here on the administration building, similar to what's over at Greystone's office. And this is just a photo of what they've got in theirs. The exterior installation looks a little more like this, but to give you a closer-up look, there's a speaker to it, a touchscreen pad that people can enter their account number and information, a barcode scanner that they can scan their bill, as well as a way for them to insert cash or swipe a credit card or debit card or even put, provide a place to pay with a check. So, it really provides multiple options for our customers. Greystone has indicated that there's still a lot of people that are paying cash and like this option over maybe a web-based payment option or coming into the office during normal business hours. Right now, the U.S. Payments network provides a number of options, including a couple of Graham's Foods options, the bales on Highway 61 and then an option out toward, out on 120 South, out toward Drake Town. So, it gives us, gives us a larger coverage as well as being able to pay at other Greystone locations. So, we are, we are looking forward to being able to offer this option to our customers and that upon the, upon, we are, we're looking with Greystone at relocating their interior unit, oh, getting a new interior unit that will be in service here before they move and then working on that exterior unit at our customer service center as on an ASAP basis. Once the contract is approved, we'll begin the work on the IT side to, or uploading paid customer information and balances as well as then the importing of the payment information after a customer is paid. I want to thank Scott and Will Lyons and Billy Renfro for their helping us looking at options as well as for the work to come and getting us up in on it.
Thank you, Ms. National. You know, it reminds me, I was talking to, my, of Miss Dad just had a funny story of Harper's in Dallas. Just a couple of weeks ago, he was talking about how people just come in there, pay the power bill, the phone bill, cable, everything there, you know, a little bit for my time, but thank you. But then, you know, Friday at the agenda prep meeting, I was sitting there, I was thinking, you know, this is kind of saying, you know, earbuds. It's just good to get up with their options. I said under new business, conclusion of our regular business, public participation, non-agenda items, we have none. Set of session, we have none. Need much?
I'll make a question, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.